Hello.
Can you hear me?
The meeting of the Coolio Okalani Iki Neighborhood Board will now come to order. Aloha, Kako, welcome all of you. Thank you for being here with us and for representing your community. And to our police and firefighters, we thank you very much for all you do to keep us safe. I would like to start out with the report from the Honolulu Fire Department. Would, yes, please come up to the mic. Aloha.
Good evening, everyone. I'm firefighter one Alice Domingo out of the Wailupi Fire Station. The statistics provided below represent confirmed number of incidents in the NHB's geographical area for the previous month. In terms of fires, there has been one wildland or brush fire. In terms of emergencies, we've had thirty-six medical emergencies and six motor vehicle crash collision emergencies. So that's a total of forty-three incidents for the month. And then our fire safety tip of the month is move over for emergency vehicles. Drive with caution and obey all traffic laws, including the move over law, to help protect our first responders while performing their duties near or on a roadway. This is more than public courtesy, it's the law. And HRS requires a driver of a vehicle that is approaching an emergency vehicle that is stopped for emergency investigation of a possible traffic violation, rendering assistance to a police officer or other official duties as indicated by the flashing emergency lights of the stopped emergency vehicle shell. One, slow down to a reasonable and prudent speed that is safe under the circumstances of an emergency road situation ahead. If necessary, the driver shall come to a complete stop before making a lane change under paragraph and make a lane change into the adjacent lane if necessary and if it is safe to do so or if possible to two lanes over which leaves one lane between the driver and the emergency. Emergency vehicle means police, fire, EMS, ocean safety, freeway service patrol, tow trucks, and even some state and county vehicles as well personnel. And I could take any questions if anyone has any.
If anyone has any. Yes, we have a question. Please go ahead.
I'm concerned about the Wailupi stream. It's turned into a jungle basically. And is there any chance the fire department could do a study to see what kind of fire hazard it is? That bugger catches on fire with any kind of winds. This whole valley could potentially go up. And it's been a very, very dry winter in my opinion. And a lot of my neighbors are very concerned, not just on the stream itself, but that would spread to houses across the street. So is there any way we could have the fire department do a recap or survey or a study? Because we've studied this thing for twenty-five years and it's back. So that's my question.
We could definitely have the department.
Okay, Captain Wassman from Wailupi Fire Station. So I think last time you asked a similar question, then we had, so I think, believe the city is responsible for cleaning the stream. What we do is we will periodically, I have my crew go to the bridges and then we'll take photos and we'll kind of assess the risk for our purposes. And I think from beyond that, we'd have to kick the question upstairs. But yeah, we, just in general, we call it pre-planned. So we often, you know, our whole administrative area will go around, drive around, look for hazards and things of that nature. Zed, can I answer your question or?
When you say kick it upstairs, that would be?
Wes, Wes, we'll ask the administration if they?
I think it's really an issue.
No, we, we agree.
It's like a jungle right now. And it gets drier and drier. I think it could become more of a problem. So I do appreciate any help you could do. That'd be great.
Yeah, we probably just take a trip this month and we'll take a look. Anything else?
My question is, if the stream is, if there's enough rain and the stream is, the vegetation is as green as it is now and there is some water flowing, is it a fire hazard at this point? Or is that something that, a situation that can change as, in drier conditions?
I would believe it'd be variable depending on the rainfall. Another concern would be flooding. So that's obvious, another obvious concern.
But if I may, there are trees in that stream. It's not just the green grass. That's misleading. It's a forest. But there's trees fifteen, twenty feet tall after they bulldozed it a year and a half ago. And the trees are back. And that's what I'm concerned about, those trees. The grass is an issue, but not like the trees that I'm talking about.
All right.
May I just ask a favor of you? When you, the next time you take pictures, can you forward them to our neighbor, our assistant, Zoidel Mogoe? And he can, he can put them in the report for today?
Okay, yeah, we're happy to do so.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? Thank you, officers, for coming tonight. Is the Honolulu Police Department here? Do we have any representatives?
Good evening, Lieutenant Thompson from District Seven.
Hi.
Hi, I'll start with the stats for August. There were zero motor vehicle thefts, four burglaries, eleven thefts, and nine unauthorized entry into motor vehicle cases. Total cost of service for the month was six thousand five hundred fifty-three. The safety tip for the month, I'd like to talk about, there was business burglaries that occurred earlier this week in, I believe it was Kailua. It involved several businesses in a strip mall that had their windows smashed in by, I believe, a rock. And it reminds me of a spree that happened about six months earlier in the year. And I just wanted to give tips for businesses. So this can be found on our website, but alarms are a good deterrent, recommended for businesses. Security guards, well, security guards make business less attractive to thieves. Hiring guards may not be financially feasible for your business. Consider forming an association when neighboring businesses to share the costs. Doors, all businesses should have tamper-proof pick-resistant door locks. And access doors should have double dead bolt locks. Keep the surrounding areas, surrounding doors unobstructed. Lighting, all businesses should have adequate perimeter lighting. Areas around the front door, rear door, and all windows should be well lit. Lights should be positioned as high as possible to prevent tampering. Motion detectors and floodlights are also recommended. And cash, try not to keep cash in cash registers or out of your business overnight. Make several small bank deposits instead of one large deposit. And do not make deposit at the same time or in the same way so that they cannot track a pattern or, if they're watching. But more tips for these can be found on our website, honolupd.org. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for the Honolulu Police Department? Yes.
I've been working the neighborhood. A lot of my neighbors are very concerned about the e-bikes. It appears like younger guys with no helmets are doing wheelies, cutting in and out of traffic. Sometimes disrespectful. And I'm not sure what the rules are for e-bikes, if, how you handle that. But you know, the bikes can go up to thirty-five, forty miles an hour. And they could be a real concern for kids playing and, in the neighborhood. So that was a question they asked.
Yes, it's come up a lot of, a lot at neighborhood board meetings about the e-bikes. There's not a lot of regulation on them as far as laws per se, but I just saw on the news this morning that they're looking into passing regulation on them that they have already worked in the mainland. But it was on the news today when they were gonna make the bikes a three-tier system on, I'm not quite sure, but it was on the news today and there should be some legislation, regulation on them forthcoming. But right now, it's, it's kind of like a gray area. But if you do see anything hazardous, by all means, call 911.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the Honolulu Police Department?
I may make your day on this, but my neighborhood is a lot of older people and I'm the youngest. They're concerned, they've heard this rumor that if there's somebody trespassing on your property, unless you have a no trespassing sign somewhere on your property, that the police are not allowed to go on the property and do their work. Is that a joke or is that something that possibly is true?
Well, if, if, so if you're, if you're, if your property is fenced in a way that would, like if there was a fence and it would, you know, from outside looking in, it's to keep people from, from intruding into your property, that's, that's, that's a strong trespassing. But if someone's walking through your property, say, is it open lawn without a fence? We'd pretty much have to ask them to leave first before a trespassing violation would take place.
So everyone should get a no trespassing sign then and put it off property. Is that, is that what you're saying?
I'm not sure if your question is, is related to like, so a lot of times businesses will, businesses will call to ask us to remove people from their, from their property. But they don't wanna, they don't wanna meet face to face or they don't wanna, we cannot, we cannot ask people to get off property. We need a homeowner or property representative to ask the persons to leave. And we'll stand by for safety, make sure that nothing happens. And if they still refuse to leave, then it becomes a violation and then we can take enforcement action at that time. But if, if the property owner is refusing to meet, we cannot act on behalf of the property owner.
Thank you, Lieutenant Thompson. Are there any other questions for him? Thank you for coming tonight and, and for giving us advice regarding criminal activity in our area.
Thank you.
Our next report is from the Board of Water Supply, Christopher Sugimoto. Are you online?
I am here, Chair. Hello, everyone. My name is Chris Sugimoto from the Honolulu Board of Water Supply. Before I give tonight's report, I would like to go over a question that was asked at last month's board meeting. So it was pertaining to the water quality in the Kalani Iki area. Has there been any contaminants detected? So no contaminants that could be related to Red Hill have been found in the water in this area. For more detailed information, you can pull up your water report at bordewatersupply.com under the water quality section of the website. You type in your address and the water report for your home will come up and can be downloaded. FYI, we send out these reports to all of our customers every June. If anyone has specific water quality issues, you can call our communications office at eight zero eight seven four eight five zero four one. And let me share my report for the month. Hey, so for this month's report, the water main breaks, there was five water main breaks that happened last month. Two actually at the same address. First one was on eight dash nine, it was an eight-inch main and the address was ninety-two How Street. And it was about sixty-four years old. Next one, two occurred at this address on two different dates, on eight dash twelve and eight dash twenty-one. It's an eight-inch main and the address was nine three nine Aluwali Place. And it was sixty-four years old as well. The next one was on eight dash twelve, eight-inch main and the address was one five one one Alanuka Place. And that one was twenty-six years old. And the last one was on eight dash twenty-four, eight-inch main and the address was two five four Mokomoku Place. And that one was fifty-four years old. Tonight's share of water announcements is Imagine a Day Without Water. So get ready for the annual Imagine a Day Without Water event on Saturday, September twenty-eighth, from ten AM to two PM at Kapale Regional Park. Come join the Board of Water Supply and various city, state, and community agencies and organizations for a day full of activities that focus on the value of water, interactive exhibits, including rain barrel workshops, ziriski plant craft activities, and succulent mini workshops. Ono food will be available for purchase. Admission is free for those of all ages. You can find out more on our website at www.bordewatersupply.com/onewaterhawaii. That's the end of my report. Does anyone have any questions or comments for BWS?
We have a question for you, Chris.
Yeah, I was wondering if you have any project, any work projects going on at the, up Laukahi hillside at the reservoir. Is there any work going on up there?
Is that the Inahaina one seventy reservoir project?
No, it's not Inahaina. It would be, do you know where Waialaiki?
Yes, yes.
You go up Laukahi and maybe one block up, there's a road to a reservoir. Is there work going on at that reservoir?
I think we could just be renovating the pump at that reservoir. But let me bring this back and then I'll come with something more concrete for next month.
Okay, I could even call you and see if you find out in the meantime. I'm wondering, I'm wondering if you're renting out the parcel, the gravel parcel beside the heckler station on Kalani Anole Highway at Kalani High School. I'm wondering if you guys are renting that parking parcel.
Gee, that's, I don't know. I will bring this back and hopefully I'll have something for you at next month's board meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, Chair recognizes you. Okay, this is Helani Sonora-Palae. I just wanted to mahalo the Board of Water Supply for your testimony today in support of House, of the House Rizzo asking the Navy to do weekly testing and thank the Board of Water Supply for all the work you've been doing to keep our water safe. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, mahalo.
The Chair recognizes Tara Wass.
Is that me, Rojas?
Oh, yes, I didn't see your name. Please go ahead and ask your question, Tara.
Yeah, I just want to echo Helani and thanking the Board of Water Supply in giving the, in light of what we just heard today of the Honolulu City Council passing the resolution urging, and you know, the Navy to test weekly as well as to have a third party, independent testing. And I wanted to say though, when I saw your report, your announcement about that day without water, you know, I'm always positive and words do have meaning. So keep it on that. Let's just say we need to have a world with water. So I don't know if you want to change it. Let's imagine a world or an island always with water with the activities. And could you think of maybe producing maybe publicity that we could even hand out to our neighbors and our community so that a public service announcement of the seriousness of our water at hand? Have you ever thought about that and that we could distribute, you know, what is created on behalf of or by the water supply?
I think we've given out public service announcements in the past, mainly to just to stress the importance of conserving water. But if you're asking for some like flyers or some like additional announcements, I could provide that at next month's board meeting and see if that would suffice.
Okay, because we have members and I'm in Tendat Ever Beach. And so, yeah, I would love to have that. And could you update it to though, like right now? Not like typical, because right now it's not typical anymore. It's, our water supply is in need of watching, helping, and you know, standing up for it. So mahalo.
Yeah, definitely. I'll provide some announcements and flyers at next month's board meeting.
Yes, Chair recognizes Helani Sonora-Palae.
Okay, you know, I have to agree with Tara about the, the name of the event, a day without water. In, in our culture, we have this saying, ikiola ka, ikoolelo keola, ikoolelo kamake, which means in the word is life and the word is death. And a lot of times, you know, we do prayers in our culture where we visualize what it is that we are struggling or fighting for. So I'm a little concerned about the cultural aspect of doing an event called a day without water. That's, that's the only thing I would be concerned about. But thank you. Appreciate, I know it comes from a good place. Just giving my two cents.
Any other questions for Christopher Sugimoto?
Sorry, quickly, could you, could you provide it to all neighborhood boards, not only the Coolio O'One?
Yeah, definitely. I can note that down and then they can send that out to all the neighborhood board reps to provide at the next month's neighborhood board meetings.
Yee mahalaka, as you're coming up soon, next week.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming, Chris, and for helping us get the word out.
All right, mahalo, everyone.
Chris, are you still there?
Uh, yes.
Oh, Helani has one more thing to add.
Okay.
All right, Chris, could you share that back with Board of Water Supply, what I said about the cultural, the cultural aspect of naming an event a day without water, especially now that we're in the water crisis? Thank you.
Okay, mahalo. I'll bring that back.
Okay. Normally I would move on to board business, but our board doesn't have enough members tonight to reach quorum. We need nine members in order to conduct business and act on the things that are listed in the agenda under board business. I'd like to just briefly go over what we had hoped to cover, but we will have to just, we will have to move those to our next meeting. So apologies to anyone who is here on behalf of these issues. The first, the first thing we wanted to address was vacancies. We welcome anyone who would like to serve on the neighborhood board. We don't have enough people to, to represent the different, the different valleys, different districts in the Coolio Okalani Iki area. And we need everyone so that we can make, make things better for our neighborhoods and preserve what is important to us and also deal with the changes that are taking place that we can have some role in. So first was, we, is filling vacancies. The second item was adjusting the number of board member positions so that we can reach quorum every meeting that we have. The next one was to provide awards to our representatives, both in the legislature and in the organizations that participate with us regularly for attending our meetings. And we call those the strawberries and onions, onions awards. And they're the brainchild of Kevin Mul Kern, who suggested that we vote to give strawberries, a basket of strawberries to all of the, our representatives who were good about coming and, and sharing what they were doing and listening to our concerns. Whereas people who don't come, representatives who don't come, will get onions because they make us cry. But we'll hold off on that until the October meeting. So let's go now into public input for items that are not on the agenda. And I first want to welcome all of the residents of Iki Place and to thank Sherry Spangler for, for going out to, to all of you and finding out what was important to you in regards to the signage on Iki Place. Would you like to come up and say something to us? Oh, please come up to the mic. Yeah, tell us. Yeah, please state your name and, and go ahead. Talk aloud.
Marina Pang, and I'd like to thank Sherry for coming over to our neighborhood and telling us about what the Department of Transportation was planning. And I was ready to tell them what I really thought.
That's all right. That's good.
But since she told us that it was already like a mute point, yeah, so I'd like to thank Sherry for that.
I'd like to call up Sherry to just tell everyone what has come about. The letter from Council Chair Waters and also from, from Department of Transportation. Sherry, can you just let us know where things stand?
I see.
Oh, you're right.
Kyle Thompson's there too. Just let him quickly say.
Okay.
Hi, Kyle Thompson. I'm also resident of Iki Place. Everything she said. And I wanted to thank Board Tommy Waters and Sherry and her sister for preventing the sign from being erected. And this is my first neighborhood board meeting, actually, so very interesting.
That's lovely.
Yes, thank you. Actually, I have to go.
Okay. Thank you for joining us.
Could we have a little background for those of us that are not?
Yeah. It had to do with Casey Abe was mentioning certain things that signs he wanted to put on Kalani Anole Highway. And one of them was a signage for a small self-enclosed neighborhood called Iki Place, which is a dead-end community with no curves, no sidewalks. And the roads are private. Once you get by the homes, it's all private. And they wanted to put a direction, a four-foot by one and a half foot sign on the highway with an arrow directing cars in there. But there's, as I was saying, back in the fifties when Bishop Estate wanted to build, they were trying to develop an improvement district. So they, they put, they leased out all these parcels, but they had, they couldn't buy Iki Place because it was cooliana land. They couldn't buy it. They couldn't acquire it. So they built, they leased all around it. So Iki Place was self-contained within our neighborhood. But there was no access road in or out of it except on Kalani Anole Highway. And it's a lovely neighborhood. People have been in there for decades. I met some people that I knew back in the fifties. And it was, it was very exciting and thrilling to talk to everybody. But anyway, I have since talked with Tommy Waters and Casey Abe. And I got, there's only thirteen parcels in there. I got ten of the parcels that were home to sign the picture that Casey had supplied that somebody wanted to do. And they said, I'm so-and-so, I live at this address and I don't want that sign. So that was ten of the thirteen parcels that were against it. It only goes to those little homes. They have, actually, just to let you know, good funny question, but it's true. There's already a sign on the highway. It's just like every other city and county sign on the highway. So they didn't need a four-foot one up there pointing people in when they couldn't go anywhere. So they didn't need a four-foot one up there pointing people in when they couldn't go anywhere except hit the walls, which they are doing already. So anyway, um, Casey, that's me, Casey and Tommy Waters and I have all talked it through. Uh, they, I showed them the, uh, original handwritten testimony from the people and they're not going to do the sign. So that's all. And I thank everybody's efforts on that behalf and the community was just lovely. It was wonderful talking with you and thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you very much.
Are there any more, um, concerns on the part of our community that you would like to bring up? Yes, please, rise. No, no, just wait. Uh, we're going in order on the agenda. It's gonna go pretty quickly. Thank, yeah, hang in there. We're waiting for you. Yeah, we're looking forward to your presentation. Okay, are there any other concerns on, on the part of the public? Please go, come up and tell us your name and, and let's hear it.
Hi, thank you. My name is Jeannie Wilks and I'm head of Holy Nativity School, just next door. And, um, since my time at the school, which has been the past six years and long before my time there, there's been great concern about the safety for pedestrians crossing Nenui Place. And, um, just last week, we held one of our, two, twice a year, we hold traffic rallies with students and parents holding signs um, to bring recognition and awareness to be safely driving in that space. It's actually a five mile an hour speed limit in that section, which is almost impossible to drive. And we have drivers driving up to thirty miles an hour. They regularly blow through the crosswalk when we have crossing guards in yellow vests with big orange flags and very tiny children. So it's very concerning. Um, we were fortunate that, uh, Councilman Tommy Waters did come and join us last Friday at our rally. And we're very grateful for his publicity that he put on his social media channels, which we also shared. But, um, it's just, it's a sickness. I, I'm, I'm sick about this because I know that it's really just a matter of time before something very tragic happens, as has happened to other students on the island. And our students are three years old to eleven or twelve, so they're very small. And then in the neighborhood, we have many kupuna who come volunteer at our school, part of our community. And it's really very small children and kupuna who are crossing this road on a regular basis. So I'm just here, not really sure what I'm asking the board to do, but just to help support as we try to get, um, more attention to this space and area. And I do want to also thank HPD, who since, um, our tra- our last traffic rally has asked a, an officer to be there um, from seven-thirty to eight when we have our drop-off time and then two-thirty to three, uh, which is our pickup time, which is the heaviest traffic time of the day also, unfortunately. So, um, as I understand it, for over twenty years, the head of school at Holy Nativity School, whoever that has been, has been trying to work with city and county on this. And there is some misunderstanding because strangely, the little strip of Nenui Place that bisects the campus. So we have the main campus on the Makai side and then the gym and Osco Field on the Malka side. That, just that one strip of Nenui Place is actually a city-county street. The rest of that road that runs through the shopping center is a private road. And so it's often misconstrued that, well, that's a private road. You would have to do that. But I promise you, if it was a private road and I owned it, it would be closed. So, um, as we learn and, and try to gather more information, I'm just hopeful that we can count on the neighborhood board's support just to keep the neighborhood safe.
Yes, please go ahead, Chair.
Is there any way that our board and your church can get together via the neighborhood board and have someone from City Department of Transportation come here and tell us what they could do to help that situation? Cuz as long as I've been on the board since nineteen eighty-nine, it's been an issue.
Yes.
And it just gets worse. And you're right, it's very little children and, and elderly, the kupuna, and it's, it's, it just gets worse.
Yes.
Um, so maybe if we could maybe invite City Department of Transportation to come and we could talk about the issue. Maybe you can come again and then they can come up with some ideas of what they can do. Someone's gonna get killed.
They are. And I've met with the city and county, uh, engineers and I've met with the state engineers because I'm playing a little game of ping pong because the city and county says, well, we can't impact the traffic on Kalani'ana Ole because going through Nenui Place and turning onto Nenui Street is the only way you can turn left out of this neighborhood to get onto Kalani'ana Ole. Ever since, I'm, I understand it was about twenty years ago, they removed the left turn signal at the stoplight. So people are forced through the middle of our school in order to turn left. So city and county said, call the state because that impacts Kalani'ana Ole. So I called the state. And the state came and they watched for a morning and they said, yeah, this is really bad. You should contact the city and county. I said, I did.
We're impacted on both sides and they're very impacted by this side because we were trying to fight for Nenui Street, have it not be a cut-through.
Yes.
Because it became a cut-through and they don't even have curves anymore cuz they repaved it and paved right up to the sidewalks that flooded the homes. Um, maybe we can have the state talk with the city. And maybe with the Community Association of Inahaina, the Inahaina Community Association could maybe talk and see if they're open to reopening the left-hand turnover on the, uh, Eva side, which the community, some people in the community have asked for.
What we will do is, um, we'll put it on the next agenda for the neighborhood board and invite a representative from the Department of Transportation to speak on what can be done.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Yes, um, Shelley.
Just very quickly, obviously, change takes time.
Yes.
Is it possible while waiting for change to walk the children further down to cross in front of the library where there's more of a length of view for the drivers? Or is that not possible because of the private property?
We could. The one thing that I would just let you know is that I don't think it will have an impact. And I don't mean to be a negative person here. I've, we've done everything we can think of possible in that we don't allow our children to cross right near the corner, um, where the stop sign is, further closer to Nenui Street. We direct everybody to our last crosswalk right before, I don't even think it's twenty yards, maybe even twenty feet from the library crosswalk. They're right next to each other and there's a speed bump in between and people are still barreling through. And it's really, I mean, if you ever want to come be scared to death, uh, I welcome you. We have, you know, two crossing guards. I have my assistant out there with her sturdy little electric whistle that, um, reminds people, as I said, flags, yellow vests. And truly, people are going almost thirty miles an hour and I don't know how they get that acceleration that fast. So I very much appreciate that. Um, and, and we're patient in terms of if there's any way to make movement, we'll be patient for it. Um, just really concerned.
Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, there are several people that have, um, comments or questions. Okay, Chair recognizes Janine Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I would just like to say, I was confused about where the speeding occurred. But when you told me that it happened over the, the speed bump, now I understand you're actually on the part that goes out to, um, from the shopping center, which is amazing to me because how do you go that fast over the speed bump, you know? But I would like to tell you that we are very much in favor of keeping our keke safe. And we'll do anything that we can to help with this. But just would like to say that I grew up, um, going to Holy Trinity School, which is right on Kalani'ana Highway. And we had crossing guards, JPOs, and a principal who would stop a nun that would go out in the middle of the highway and stop all the cars. You know, if you can imagine that, that's what she used to have to do before the school closed. But yeah, you can get people who speed recklessly all the time and we will, we will try our best to get the city and the state to both work on this with you.
Thank you.
I just have a question. So, um, is there a, uh, sign that has like child crossing? Sorry, I pass that all every day, but I know, see, I don't even notice it. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And then is there like a five mile per hour sign too? Okay, see, I didn't even know that too. So even hearing this, this makes me really concerned. Uh, I mean, I, I live here, so I don't even notice these things.
From, just from this library to the stop sign, which is maybe fifty yards, it is a crosswalk, a speed bump, a crosswalk, a speed bump, a crosswalk, a stop sign. And I can't tell you, I'm telling you, more than once a day, we have children and teachers in the crosswalk with a close call. And, and we do, we have, and I, I'm out there, we have staff people out there, we're in vests, we have orange flags at, and we walk out before we allow anyone to cross. So we're in the middle of the street. And one of our kupuna who helps with crossing was nearly hit by a, by a pickup truck two weeks ago.
So, um, have you ever reached out to any of the stores in the shopping center, like, to help with some kind of? Cuz I mean, if someone handed me a little thing that said, you know, when you leave here, this is the mile, you know, this is the, this is how fast you can go and, um.
That's a great idea.
You know, just.
Even just a reminder. Yes.
You know.
Good, good suggestion. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, part of the problem is they're trying to make the red light is, is the issue.
Yes.
Um, they don't care about little kids. They just wanna be not inconvenienced to stop and wait for the next one.
Yes, agreed.
I, I see one more hand up. Tara Ro- Rojas? Is this a different concern or are you?
Different concern, but as I'm listening to what you guys are talking about now, I just brought to mind that we had that here too, even in Eva Beach. You know, n- north road and we act, we put on like fluorescent, like the vest and we went with our hi-hawaii and, and were stopping. So that had the, the keke could actually cross through, you know, but my concern was this. Right now, I'm trying to think of how we can organize, you know, for education in addition to trafficking, speeding, land, water, island-wide solution. So I, as I'm listening to this, I wanted to bring to light the CRB and ask you all, like, how is the coconut rhinoceros beetle on your guys' side? Because it's looking even at, oh, past minutes.
Yeah.
Can we, can we just finish the, um, issue that we're talking about and then, um, I'll bring you up.
Sure, sure.
I'll recognize you in just a minute. Hold off just a bit. Okay, so we are going, is, are there any other suggestions? Pardon? Oh, come on up.
I just came back from visiting my daughter in Seattle and they have an unusual approach to dealing with traffic violations. Um, I, I asked my daughter what the little strobe light was when, um, people went, uh, made a right turn without stopping. They said, um, that person's gonna be getting a ticket in the mail. Um, and so they have, they do something called enforcement. Um, my, my, my daughter, my daughter is, um, a, a very good driver. Um, and, uh, she said, you know, Dad, I passed a stopped school bus. Um, and, um, uh, you're not supposed to do that in Seattle. I got a ticket, uh, in the mail. And if you're going over such and such, um, in a school zone, you get a ticket in the mail. Um, I'm kind of old-fashioned, but I kind of thought that the police, uh, we're paying for are the ones that are supposed to enforce our speeding laws. And I'd like to believe that most people driving, maybe, um, eighty percent of them have driver's licenses, but that means they've demonstrated they understand the traffic rules. Um, I don't understand, uh, why we can't ask the police, uh, to, um, give out whether it be warnings, um, if that's what we'd like to do. But I think when people are adults and they own a forty or seventy thousand dollar car and have a driver's license, they probably understand what the rules are. And so a ticket might be the best way to enlighten them. I don't ask the police many questions these days because to have the police tell me who was robbed in the neighborhood does me very little, um, I don't know, it, it's, it's meaningless to me. I'd like to know, how many people have you arrested for speeding in the school zone in front of Inahaina Shopping Center? Um, how many people have you arrested for breaking into people's houses? How many people have you arrested for trespassing? An interesting, and I'm a loudmouth holly, when I called up the Renton Police Department, they, they, um, answered the phone. Uh, they directed me to, um, the department that could, that told me exactly how many felony arrests they made that month, um, how many misdemeanors arrests they made that month. And I thought, wow, this is, this is magical. Um, I was concerned though, they had a dragon, um, actually detained on the roof deck of their parking lot. And I mentioned that PETA, um, would take great offense to that. They said that was a temporary condition and they were finding a home for the dragon. So, but they had a sense of humor. But I don't understand why we're not saying, why are you not enforcing the speed limit? Um, uh, why are we waiting for the kid to die, you know, and then we're gonna put in a speed bump? It's our fault because we didn't put in a speed bump. It's our fault because we didn't put up a sign. It's our fault because we didn't have a flag and a crossing guard. Um, I, I, I thought that we're, um, and by the way, the police who claim they're underpaid, uh, start individuals out of high school at eighty-five thousand dollars a year. Um, it's a damn good-paying job. Yeah. Anyway, thank you for letting me in.
Thank you, Kevin.
Um, I have, I have one, I have a suggestion. Also, like, maybe putting, I, I don't know if you can do this, you might have to ask the shopping center, but put little, um, uh, flyers on the cars and do that for a few weeks so that that'll raise maybe awareness. I don't think people would get mad. I wouldn't.
Great idea. And we'll make really cute cards to put on. Oh, thank you. For sure. I'll get your contact information. I do just want to say that since our traffic rally last Friday, um, HPD has had a police officer seven-thirty to eight, oh, I think I did say this, and two-thirty to three. And she has been out there, um, unless she's been called away and she's using her radar gun. And I don't know if she's ticketed anyone, but she has asked people to pull over and she has spoken to them. Her name is Officer Kat and we're very grateful for her.
That's good. Okay, um, so Tara.
Yeah.
Oh.
She has.
Yes. Okay, Tara, please go ahead. Um, so you wanted to, you wanted to ask about the, um, coconut rhinoceros beetle. We actually had a presentation on that a few months ago here. What, um, what would you like to ask? Okay. I'm going to go net, go ahead to officials' reports. I think this will go fairly quickly so that our presenters can, um, get up soon and, and teach us some things. So. Dave, I think you are the first. No? Oh, okay. So, oh, great. All right. So, um, our first official's report is from Congressman Ed Case. And we have a representative with us. Lo, is it Julie?
Yes, Julia. Hi, everyone.
Hi, Julia.
Hi, um, I just wanted to give a quick report. Uh, my name is Julia Anashewsko. I work as a staff assistant for Congressman Case and the Honolulu office. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and post some resources. Um, so the most recent one is the Quarter Three Neighborhood Board Report. Um, as always, Congressman Case's website is the best place to find latest information and any assistance requests. You can also find that, uh, board report under the, uh, tab titled Newsroom. Um, I also wanted to share that, uh, the Congressman's Service Academy nomination process is open to applicants until October eleventh, um, as well as the annual Congressional App Challenge until October twenty-fourth. And if anyone has any questions regarding eligibility to either of these or any questions or comments, I'm happy to take them back to the office. Uh, my direct email is also in the chat. So, um, if, if the board wants to disperse that as well, I'm, I'm happy to do that route. But that's all for me.
Hey, for being here, Julia. Are there any questions, um, or issues that you, that you would like to bring up to Congressman Case? Please go ahead. Please go ahead, Cherry.
I don't know if it's in his purview, but how does Congressman Case feel about the possible, the concept of windmills out in Kaevi Channel?
I do not have an official statement on hand from him. Um, I'm happy to connect to see if we can get some more information on where he stands. I know that he's aware of the issue, or not the issue, but the the development there in the PV channel. So um, if you want, um, you can send me an email or also uh by phone. We can also chat if if you'd prefer.
We're having a presentation here in this meeting. Maybe you might want to stick around and listen for it for Ed.
Of course.
Go ahead, Haileani.
Testing, okay. Um, I wanted to, um, thank you for being here. I wanted to ask um what um Rep Case is going to be doing about the PAHs that were found in the IAL well and the migration of the um uh of the plume in our aquifer here on Onahu. Um, I know that the Red Hill CRI, the Community Representation Initiative, did send a letter over a month ago about concerns about not just the PAHs, but also about the lead. Um, we do have uh real water, um, water issues going on today. The city council um just passed a resolution asking or urging the US Department of Defense and the US Navy to do um third-party weekly testing of their wells. Um, and to test for all of the contaminants that were stored and leaked from Red Hill. Um, we I I know that some of Ed Cases, your, of of our congressmen's constituents, including myself, has reached out to him. And none of us has heard back about the issue of Red Hill and about the issue of the contaminants in our water. Is there a way, how do we get in contact with Mr. Case? How do we get a meeting with him? So we can have a discussion about the water.
I'm happy to facilitate that. Um, probably the best way is to call our district office. Um, since we're all close together for policy-related issues. Um, that would be our DC office, so I think they might have a more comprehensive understanding um of that DOD report. Um, I can definitely take that back, see what information we can gather, and then go from there. Um, yeah, feel free to send me an email and then uh on the uh website is also our um contact information, direct phone line to our district office. Does that, does that make sense?
Um, I I I think um what I'm communicating to you is that we have reached out and we haven't gotten anything back, but I, if um, do we have your direct contact? Do we have? You do?
Mm-hmm, yeah. So my
We have your email. That would be great. Um, we would, I would like to sit down with, we do have a um a Red Hill resolution. Um, all the neighborhood boards on Oahu has passed a resolution regarding Red Hill. It's the only issue that all one hundred percent of all neighborhood boards have taken a stance on. Um, and it's what is really frustrating um having to deal with this issue. And I've been at the border water um supply meetings. I've been in meetings with Ernie Lau. I've been in meetings with um pretty much a lot of officials that are concerned about our water is that we don't hear back from the congressional delegation. The congressional delegation is the only um body that can put pressure on the Department of Defense since you folks are up there in DC. Um, and if we don't get your support on on kind of urging, on urging the US Navy and the Department of Defense to be transparent and to share information about what is going on with the water, why um, why can't they do weekly tests? Um, what are they gonna do about the lead? Why is the Department of Health? Um, you know, not doing anything about lead in the water. There is no safe, it's in our groundwater. There's no safe level, level of lead um in, you know, in water, none. And the other thing I want to say too is one of the main issues, and I I'm sorry, I just need to say this, but is the long-term um water monitoring plan? The one that was signed by the EPA and the Department of Health? They're not even using um standards that are EPA standards. We had some, we had an independent audit, um independent person, uh group, we paid for them to look over the long-term uh water monitoring standard, um, plan that was just signed by the Department of Health and the EPA. It doesn't even meet EPA standards when it comes to how they're collecting the water samples. So this is a real concern here. And uh we were just in the process of drafting another letter to the congressional delegation as the Red Hill CRI. And let me just say that I know I'm taking up a lot of time here, but this is water. We all drink it. We have one aquifer. Um, and I'm glad you came. I'll just say that. I'm glad you came. I will be in contact with you. I really, really, really think you need to meet with the Red Hill CRI um representatives, and you need to meet with um Ernie Lau and find out what's going on really right now with our water. Thank you.
Yeah, Lani, can you please explain what um Red Hill CRI stands for?
Here. Sorry. Okay, the CRI is the Community Representation Initiative. It was formed as part of the consent order um that was signed by the EPA by the US Navy and by the Defense Logistics Agency. Um, what has happened is, that was, our first meeting was in October. And we were supposed to be able to meet with the EPA as the community, as elected members. Um, we were supposed to be able to meet with the EPA, the DLA, and the US Navy about the water and and the fueling, um cleaning of the tanks, the water, um, the cleanup of our land and the uh remediation of our water. But the Navy has stopped showing up to meetings. So we don't get any information. Today, at the city council meeting, Ernie Lau himself was saying we don't, we need the Navy to share information. We need the Navy to share what is being stored, what was stored at the Red Hill facility, what was leaked at the Red Hill facility, how much was leaked? With the VAI report that came out in, I think it was November of twenty twenty-three, that that VAI, which was the Water Alliance Initiative, was formed by government officials. When they did an investigation on how much fuel was leaked from Red Hill, they found that a hun, one point four million gallons was leaked in the nineteen forties. And since the year one, six thousand gallons of fuel has been leaking from the Red Hill facility, and that's for eighty years. And that's in addition to the fuel that, um, the fuel leaks that we know of, that's the nineteen thousand gallons in twenty twenty-one, that's the twenty-seven, uh twenty-four thousand gallons in twenty fourteen. Um, it's, and the thirteen hundred gallons of PFAS, which is an which, once it's released in our environment, it never goes away. So I just wanted to share that um that we really, really do need Ed Case representative to take up this issue. Mahalo.
Thank you for your help, Julie. Julia.
Yes.
One more comment?
I fully support what Haileani is saying. One of the things, there's a saying in football that the thing you don't want to do in football is lose the locker room. And the military has, is on the verge or probably already has lost the locker room. You've lost all the people who are supposed to be supporting you because of the attitude they're presenting to the public. They were willing to even poison their own people on base. Um, it's, this is not an anti-military thing, and we understand that they're out there fighting for our freedom and our safety and for the future of the world, et cetera, et cetera. But they're beginning to act like they are too important to do anything else that would provide the safety for the, for the residents of this island. When we grew up here in the islands as children in grade school and kindergarten, one of the, all the way through grade school, you'd sit there and learn, oh, you know, what's, what's the best thing about Hawaii? And it was about the water coming down to Aquifer and where we got our water. We learned that as little children. I wish you could share with Congressman Case that we're not anti-military. We understand what they're doing for us and we appreciate it. But they have got to get serious. They're out there trying to renegotiate land to have bases, but they are presenting a very, um, we're too important to talk to you. We don't have the time. And I do know they don't have the money because the federal government is is strangling them. But something has to be done, and Ed Case and the congressional committee could help get federal money to the military to deal with this issue here in Hawaii, because this is our only water. We don't have any other option, and we need to do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, we need to move on. Is the representative for Mayor um Rick Blandiardi with us tonight? Okay, no. Dave Day? Dave Day is the representative for Governor Josh Green, and he's our man. He's wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Dave Day, Special Assistant to the Attorney General here on behalf of Governor Green. Um, I wanted to just give an update. I've already reached out to Kevin um separately in an email regarding an inquiry that he made last month regarding um what happens. And so this is actually a very interesting thing. What happens when a tree along the highway gets destroyed because of the act of somebody, so let's say a driver or something runs over a tree and it dies? Um, the answer is, is that if the Department of Transportation has enough information to determine that the person was at fault, that it moves to recoup that uh that money. There was also a question about how that's done. Um, basically, um, there is, they have a team that would go, well, pardon me. When it comes to actually replanting the tree, um, or sort of remediating the damage, that's something that they have a team for. Um, but there is also a way for people who are interested to apply. And I just wanted to share that. That was a very interesting question that I didn't know the answer to, um, that I had to look uh look for. Um, beyond that, um, I'm open to your questions uh for Governor Green.
Go ahead, Anne Marie.
My name is Anne Marie. We have a timely issue with our community, and we're trying to get a meeting with the governor, and we're not getting a really response. So how do they weigh meetings? Was it just a time thing? Because this is a urgent community issue that we need help on.
Yeah.
It's it's the uh wind turbines in Kaevi and also the alternative energy that we need to have a discussion because our ocean wildernesses should not be leased out for profit. Thank you.
So I'm I'm obviously unaware of the specific inquiries that were made or who it was made to, but I'm happy to, after I'm done with this, uh speak with you and get your information so that I can follow up.
You will hear more from her presentation, and you'll understand more what it's, this is about.
I understand. Thank you.
I was just hoping that you could also share with Governor Green uh our commitment to safe water and the position of how helping the military help themselves and us and the island and what's going on. We need the governor involved. We need everyone involved in it. We need the congresspeople. We need the governor too, and the mayor, everybody.
Understood. I will convey this.
Yeah.
Uh, can I share?
Oh, what's, Tara has a question? Okay. Go ahead, Tara.
Aloha. No, 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 and and I know uh here Helen is gonna speak. But how interesting, I was gonna say the exact same thing that uh community member just said right now, as well as the board member, that how is it possible for elected government officials, Governor Green and Ed Case, when the public is witnessing these acts of destruction that have affected parties and family and or proposals that are coming up and to request meetings? And they are not one, I used, exactly like she said, how is it being waited? Because the public is getting the response of, oh, no, I'm so sorry. He's so busy. We cannot. So just fill out this form online. It's very frustrating. We've seen it happen here. We've seen it happen in Maui. Even, you know, with elected officials there. Now, to hear from board members saying, you know, and the CRI, which is the Community Representation before protection of our water and hearing no response from Ed Case. So again, yes, we need to get everybody involved, and we need answers, and we need it so that the public can be heard, because the public is witness to these acts of destruction as well as speaking out against it. So we need an ability to sit face to face and or hear responses directly from these officials. So starting with you, the governor.
Okay.
I'm I'm not sure which acts of destruction she's referring to. Did I get some clarifications?
Yes. Um, Tara, well, what issue are you asking to have recognized? And would you like to meet with one of the officials about? Can you be a little more specific?
Well, one, the water. Uh, two, you know, just a lot of things that have been going on, the water, the the construction, and what's gonna be presented right now at six point two.
What? What is that? I'm not familiar with what you're talking about.
What what's coming up at six point two as well, the agenda? So basically, what?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, uh, everyone's gonna tune in for that, and um Dave is also gonna stay here for that presentation, right, Dave?
Yes, sir.
But just reaching the governor. Mahalo. Like, so what's the waiting system for who to meet with?
How do you set up, how do groups set up meetings and um, you know, who do they contact?
Sure. I think that there's multiple channels for doing it. I believe that the normal way that the government, the, pardon me, the governor has a constituent services team. Um, this is something where uh inquiries are made um through the governor. I don't have that exact uh sort of like phone number or email. Um, but frequently, for instance, that the governor will receive an inquiry, and that will be forwarded to um various departments. If it's a subject matter expert or handled by the governor directly. Um, and so there's a, there is a process. I'm sorry, I don't have that information on me right now, but.
But, and just to let you say, we we've tried that, and in person, he's not there or kind of leaves, and sending the request and getting a response back, no, sorry, just refill out this form. So I'm gonna put it on the record.
So so I think one of my roles is to try to facilitate things as best as I can. And um, you know, in the past, when things have been raised, I've been able to bring officials here. And I'm happy um to speak afterwards about the specific concerns. Obviously, um, the issue of water in Red Hill is something that um has been a major um sort of priority from the government, from the governor, from the Department of Health's emergency order from twenty twenty-one. I was the hearings officer in that where we declared that the, um, where I made a specific finding um that the Red Hill facility was a ticking time bomb. Um, and that was something that was taken all the way up and eventually dismissed and led to the settlement that you were speaking of. So this is obviously something that is a priority for the governor. I don't have a specific information about what was requested um or as far as a meeting, but I'm happy to follow up.
Thank you. We actually invited him to our Red Hill CRI meeting. And we got on, he doesn't have time to come to the meeting. So um, we, and this, we just literally just, I just got the response back right before, it was two weeks ago. So um, we would like him to come to a Red Hill CRI meeting. Um, and we also need him to use whatever power he has to leverage um that against the military so that we can get answers from them. The military is not giving, not even the border water supply answers to what is in the water. And they actually botched their own tests purposely, I believe, their own water test so that they, so no one can really prove what's really in the water. But um, the border water supply wants the Navy to do weekly tests. Um, the city council just passed it unanimously today, um, that position. Um, and I think that the um the governor needs to support the border water supply. Let's just put it that way. And listen to Ernie Lau.
Yeah, Lani, do you know in the next, on the date is for the next meeting of the Red Hill CRI?
Yes, uh, well, it's the usual, it's the third Thursday of every month. And uh, we're hoping to have it hopefully in this neighborhood sometime, somewhere. So we're looking for a space as well. But um, the the But, um, the, the governor cannot, he should not even like consider giving the US military the leases when they expire or like even consider that option. In fact, all, everything should be revoked until they release the information that needs to be released. What were they storing at Red Hill? How much spilt? What's it really in our water? What's in our land? And we need them to, to start cooperating with the, the city government, with the Board of Water Supply. You know, with, um, uh, with water protectors who are literally just trying to make sure that our water is okay. So, uh, I think, you know, we don't have, I don't have any power. The governor does. He has the power to make things happen. And I think that is where we need him, we need him to make something happen with the Navy. We need them to come to the table. We need answers. We need them to be truthful and we need transparency.
Thank you, Haileani.
Thank you.
Yes.
Has Governor Green or anyone from the state of Hawaii looked into filing a lawsuit or joining the lawsuits against the military for contaminated water? Currently, the military's been responsible for, yeah, a long list of contaminated water. Kep Lijun is probably the most well-known, but there are at least 20 or 30 bases.
So I don't have that information available. I'm aware of the, the lawsuit that was brought by Board of Water Supply for some one billion plus dollars. Um, my understanding of that lawsuit is that was largely based on the fact that that specific well that was poisoned by Red Hill, um, is a city and county Board of Water Supply, um, well. Um, and that will end up, the damages stemming from that. With respect to things like PFAS, um, I know that there are many sort of things that are underway with respect to examining PFAS. There is a, currently a lawsuit against big manufacturers like 3M regarding PFAS in the water supply. Those are things caused by things like, um, fire suppressant materials. And, um, in fact, there was just an article in the New York Times from Saturday or Sunday that specifically talked about the fact that this is something that's, the PFAS issue is, is impacting agricultural fertilizer as well. Um, and so this is something that's kind of an ongoing thing. But I will inquire more specifically about, um, uh, specific suits.
Thank you. And thanks for bringing up the suits. Sorry, one more thing. Can I say one more thing?
There you go.
Okay. So the, um, the monitoring wells, they cost at least a million dollars. So what's going to happen is the Board of Water Supply has to set up more monitoring wells then, and they have to, today Ernie announced that he's going to have to make a decision very, very soon on whether to close one more well in Aia, which is the Ka'amilo Well. Um, what that plume, the contamination is moving westward because of the way the aquifer is, it, it, the water's going to flow down. So it's going downwards towards the west. We won't, and guess who's flipping the bill for that, right? All of us got notice that our water bill's going up, right? Percentage, every, uh, certain percentage every year. We are paying for it. So again, this is affecting everyone on this island. And, um, thank you so much for being here. And sorry if I gave too much information, but that's the truth.
So the governor needs to, um, to get together with the people who are trying to preserve our water supply. And appreciate you, um, requesting that of him.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. He, he's a doctor. He cares, but he, he needs to give us the time. Okay. Next is the representative for Council Chair Tommy Waters. Adam Do, are you with us?
Aloha, Chair, members of the board.
Hi.
I know we have a lot of, uh, important, uh, presentations later on tonight, so I'll try to keep it quick. There are several notable measures that were passed and adopted at today's full council meeting. I would like to share with you. Um, there's been a lot of talk tonight about Resolution 24216, which urges the US Navy and the US Department of Defense to immediately implement weekly testing of all Navy Red Hill monitoring wells and drinking water wells for all chemical contaminants stemming from past fuel and hazardous materials that were used, stored, or released at Red Hill, um, bulk fuel storage facilities. Chair Waters introduced this resolution with by Chair Esther Kina. Tommy wanted to share his comments, uh, that the US Navy's slow and inadequate response to reporting the aquifer contamination following the initial devastating fuel leak into our water supply at Red Hill was unacceptable. We must fully understand if fuel and other contaminants from the Red Hill facility are making their way to our other water sources. Real-time monitoring and reporting are crucial to understanding the underground situation and protecting public health. The Board of Water Supply is making efforts but needs access to the Navy's well data immediately. This testing reason, and the results, uh, resulting data are non-negotiable for us at this point. Another, uh, very important resolution, um, that's important to this board is Resolution, Resolution 24, uh, 2024, authorizes the city to sign the interman, intergovernmental agreement with the army to conduct a study of the Wailupai watershed plan, um, watershed to plan and design flood control features at the Wailupai Valley area to prevent potential flooding. Chair Waters supports Ina-based conservation and community engagement. He secured a commitment to give the community meaningful part, to give the community a meaningful part throughout the process. I'd also like to thank Member Haileani Sonoda-Pali for all of her thoughtful in-person testimony today, uh, at the full council. I did hear some interest, um, with e-bikes resolution. Today, Resolution 24199, uh, urges the Hawaii State Legislature to update and clarify the Hawaii laws relating to electric bicycles and electric dirt bike, uh, motorcycles. Also, uh, Bill 52, 2024 was introduced today. Bill 52 proposes amendments to the city's traffic code to regulate e-bikes. It defines different classes of e-bikes, establishes licensing, uh, requirements, mandates, labeling, prohibits tampering, ensures compliance and safety standards, and also specifies rules for their operation on various types of paths and trails. The bill also includes regulations for class three e-bikes such as restrictions on helmets, um, and age, uh, requirements. Um, I also do want to thank Holy Nativity School, um, Chair Waters joined, uh, Jamie Wilkes, uh, who spoke earlier, the head of school, as long with, along with District Seven, um, Community Policing Team, uh, students and staff at the school for their traffic rally, uh, this past Friday. Our office did request HPD enforcement has also submitted a riser to the mayor's office requesting additional speed mitigation measures. Chair Waters, myself and our office staff witnessed firsthand of, um, speeding right through the traffic rally, even with, you know, 30 students, HPD officers, Chair Waters right there. It's quite sad to see and we hope to, um, get some meaningful change on, on that street. And lastly, I'd like to thank Board Member Sherri Spengler for her efforts in positioning the Eki Place residents. And also thank Casey Abe for his collaboration with Sherri and for his openness to feedback throughout this process. With that, I'm happy to pick any questions.
Well, first I'd like to just thank you, um, Adam Do, for, for, um, your updates regarding the Al Kahhi Energy proposed offshore wind project, letting us know, um, when, when the, when the organization was going to give a presentation. And also thank you for your updates on the Wailupai Stream Watershed Study. We appreciate having the opportunity to give input on that and also learn more about them. And I also, um, noticed and thank you to Council Chair Waters for keeping the Ahuwale House Street, the, the stairs that go between those two streets clear of overgrowth so that kupuna and children can walk on those stairs between those, between those areas. So thank you for maintaining them. We have a question from a member, Janine Johnson.
Hi, I just would like to say, I, I, uh, heard about the, the shootings in YNI. Very disturbing. But the, the reason it happened is because it was an unpermitted, uh, unlicensed wedding facility on that property. And it's unbelievable that the city, after 20 years of investigations, and they said a half a million dollars worth of fines, according to the story, they were not unable to, to shut that place down. And now we're left with four people dead. This is what happens when a city doesn't enforce its laws. We already have in our area, we have an, an unpermitted vacation rental that is or has over a million dollars worth of fines and nothing is done. Nothing has been shut down. Like when, when do you go and, and enforce the laws that are on the books? It's, it's unbelievable. Do we have to wait for people to die in order for that to happen? And I know it's not Chair Waters' fault. I know it's the city, but the mayor's, uh, representative is not here and I can't, can't tell them that. So you need to go back to Chair Waters and have him explain again that the residents of this city rely on getting the laws enforced, especially ones that deal with, um, unlicensed and unpermitted, um, places that, that do weddings.
This is not business.
Thank you, Janine.
Yes.
Yes. Oh, go ahead.
No, I, I just wanted to acknowledge, um, uh, Member Jamie. Thank you. I will share that with Chair Waters. I will also follow up, um, with your new mayor's representative and ask her if she can, uh, report and give you guys an update on that regarding the illegal weddings. I believe I, I know which, um, property you're, you're referring to. So thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Any other questions for, for Adam? Representative for Council Chair Tommy Waters? I don't see anymore. Thank you so much, Adam. Keep in touch.
Thank you, Chair.
Sorry. I just.
I didn't see her.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Adam? Is Adam still there? I just wanted to thank. Oh, hi. I just wanted to thank you and all your hard work and for Tommy Waters for writing that beautiful letter and working with Abe, uh, excuse me, with Casey Abe about the, um, issue of the, of the Eki Place and the sign and, and all the issues that pertained to it. And I really appreciate the efforts you made because I know it made the community very happy and felt them, made them feel heard and cared for. Thank you.
No, thank you, Sherri. Uh, I think that was a perfect example of how, um, community members and neighborhood board members, um, can get involved. I, uh, Chair Waters really appreciates you taking the time, a whole afternoon and evening, uh, evening going to, knocking on all 13 doors. You really, um, presented it very well to Chair Waters as well. Um, thank you for the presentation and a very thorough packet as well, um, as Casey as well. Casey was very responsive and I thank both of you.
Hey, thank you, Adam. I'm going to move ahead to the reports from, um, the representative for Senator Stanley Chang, if I may. Do we have a representative for Senator Stanley Chang? Hey, Teresa.
Yes.
Hi. I can't read up what's on the, on our overhead too well. Thank you for being here. Go ahead.
Thanks, Chair. Um, so I just put a couple links in the chat. Um, you can find our September newsletter at senatorchang.com. You want to sign up for our housing newsletter? Um, the link is also in the chat. I also wanted to remind people that registration is open for the 2024 Children and Youth Summit. That's going to take place on October 10th for the whole day. So if you know any young person who's 24 years or under, they can share their thoughts with the legislature on the ways to improve the quality of life for youth in Hawaii. You can register at hawaiicys.org. Um, and then something new that's rolling out is you can add your driver's license or state ID to your iPhone mobile wallet. And this digital ID will be accepted at TSA. Um, and I put the link in the chat so you can view the steps to add your, um, add your ID to your phone. And then finally, the judiciary has started mailing out their 2025 juror questionnaires to select Hawaii residents for jury duty, um, next year. And if you receive one, please complete and return it within 10 days to avoid facing a penalty. If you have any questions, please call, um, 808-539-4360 or visit courts.state.hi.us. And I'll put, um, those two contact, um, into the chat as well. And I'm here to take back any questions to Senator Chang.
Does anyone have any questions for Senator Chang?
Oh, I just have a, yeah, I have one. Go ahead. Um, I just would like, uh, for, if you could take this back to Senator Chang, that if he could prioritize clean water this next legislative session. I know that the V I bill died, um, in the House this, this past session. Um, there, I believe there's one that can still be revived. I know he did vote in support and mahalo for that. Um, but I, we do need him to prioritize the V I bill. Thank you.
Got it. I'll let him know.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thanks, Chair.
Is Representative Mark Casham with us tonight? Okay, not. All right. Last but not least, Casey Abe with Hawaii Department of Transportation. Casey, how are you?
Yes, I'm here. I'm showing my screen.
Oh, no, you're our favorite person. I'm very grateful to you for what you're, what you've done and for, for listening and, and being willing to, um, you know, do, do things the right way, which is what, what the residents want, what's good for their neighborhood. Thank you so much, Casey.
Sure. Um, good evening, Chair Burkitt, members of Kuleo Kalanuiiki Neighborhood Board, Casey Abe from the State DOT Highways Division. I want to thank Board Member Lucas for her August 26th email and a short video that showed both highway lighting on Kalanui Highway at West Halemama intersection were out. I normally don't do night inspections, but I asked my administration if they would allow me to, to start doing night inspection beside my daytime inspections. I'll work with our Oahu District Office on addressing this problem. Uh, and last month's meeting, I mentioned that our Oahu District Office still had not installed a new advanced no left turn or U-turn sign when cone at the beginning of the left turn lane at West Halemama, uh, during the morning conscious of operations. I'm happy to report they finally installed a new sign during my quick field investigation this morning. And last month's meeting, there was a concern about installing a new advanced street name sign at Eki Place. I did inform our Oahu District Office to hold off on installing the new sign and request it. I want to thank Board Member Spengler for serving the residents living at Eki Place. And since most of the residents do not want the new advanced street name sign, we will not install the new sign. But Ms. Spengler did mention the residents want a new dead end sign at the intersection of Eki Place. I'll work with our traffic friends to see if we can install the new dead end sign on, on the existing post. If we cannot, we may need to install a new sign on a separate post. I will report back in a future meeting. And I also want to thank Chair Burkitt and Neighborhood Board Assistant Zorrel on posting the electronic file of our complete work order that shows all the overhead street name signs and advanced street name signs we plan to install along Kalanui Highway on the Neighborhood Board's, um, Google Drive. Hopefully, board members can access the file and let me know by next month meeting if they do not want any other proposed overhead. Hopefully, Board members can access the file and let me know by next month meeting if they do not want any other proposed overhead street name sign or advanced street name signs to be installed, or if Board members want other signs to be installed. And finally, during last month's meeting, I mentioned about the overgrowth covering the traffic signal light at Wailea Street intersection near Kalani High School. At last month's meeting, Board Member Spangler requested to hold up on having our district landscaping crew from trimming the tree while she works with the property owner on trimming back the tree. I must apologize to Ms. Spangler, but our landscaping crew did not get my message to after they trimmed the tree the next day on Thursday, August 8. Fortunately, Ms. Spangler was at the location on Thursday, so the crew only trimmed the tree so motorists and pedestrians can have a better view of the traffic signal and pedestrian crossing signal. These pictures were taken on Friday, August 9, where the landscaping crew did not trim the low-hanging branches over the pedestrian sidewalk or the branches that were touching the overhead lines. These pictures were taken this morning during my quick field investigation. We appreciate Ms. Spangler working with the homeowner on maintaining the tree in the future to ensure the branches do not block the traffic signal head or pedestrian signal head, and having the homeowner complete the trimming of the tree where there are low-hanging branches over the pedestrian sidewalk and branches touching the overhead lines to prevent any accidents. I mean, if there's any other location the Neighborhood Board wants to volunteer to maintain, let me know and I will inform our district office. We appreciate the assistance since we are very shorthanded in our maintenance crew. This concludes my report. I can take any questions at this time.
Thank you very much, Casey. Are there any questions for him? Sheri has a question.
No question.
Oh, thank you.
Just a thank you, Casey, once again for responding to the community concerns. They are very grateful and very happy about that. And just thank you very, very much.
Sure, no problem.
There's a question from Kevin Mulkern. Kevin, do you want to come up?
Hi, Casey. My wife and I were fortunate enough to have Civil Beat publish an article Friday about the condition of the landscape plant along Kalani on Uli Highway. If you have an opportunity, it would be great if you read it. And then there's a short video that's embedded in the article. But essentially, what I've noticed over the years is we, I think landscape architects in the state do some great work installing some beautiful high-tech landscapes and irrigation systems. And my colleagues do a great job installing them, but then we walk away from them. And it almost at times seems like the irrigation systems are deliberately turned off by the maintenance crews. But the article basically touches on how the Naupaka in the Hawaii Kai area by the boat launch is dying. It's just about dead. And the palms, I guess, between Kuleo and Neu Valley, or it's called penciling, where a coconut tree or palm tree gets thinner and thinner until the top falls out. So that's an indication that it's been getting minimal or no maintenance for quite some time. And then I was concerned about one of the palms getting run over. I think it was hit, I'm guessing about four months ago. The trunk is just about decomposed, so there's not going to be any need to really pick up the trunk because the maintenance crew has just ignored it and watched it rot in the medial strip. But how does a member of the general public try to draw attention to their concern that millions of dollars of public landscapes are just kind of going up in smoke? So is there any recourse? Thank you.
Yeah, I guess, you know, in this kind of situation, if the board has concerns, they can write a letter to our Director of Transportation because our director is the one that directs the funding, the limited funding that we have. I know the Hawaii Kai area, they have, we have a contract. We're a contract landscaper, t-sker of the median area. But it's depending what's in their contract. If they're just cutting the grass and that's it, that's all they do. So this is where, I guess, again, the Neighborhood Board can speak out and write a letter. And maybe I can, you know, you folks can write a letter to the director and the director can work with our district office to reassign additional funding so the landscaper can do more work in taking care of the existing landscape. Yeah, the Neighborhood Board does have a lot of influence in writing letters like Ms. Spangler does help.
Okay, that sounds pretty radical. But thank you, Casey. That, okay. So, Casey, I want to thank you for all that you do for us and for participating in our meeting tonight. And it's nice to have a chance to thank you for change.
Sure.
I am very happy to have two wonderful presentations for you, for everyone, and for all representatives of our officials in the city, city and county and state. You would benefit by hearing these presentations. The first is from Ashley Bear. She is with the wildfire management organization. And they're trying to work with the communities to prevent wildfires and to deal with them more effectively. Please go ahead, Nani.
Sorry, Chair.
I mean, Ashley.
Sorry. Can I just clarify with the timer? Because it's been chiming, but I think largely everybody just thinks I'm being rude over here and just, my phone's just going off. So five minutes for the presentations. But what is the guideline for the people responding to the presentations? Is there a time guideline? Two minutes. Okay. All right. Thank you.
I think it would be a good idea, though, to explain at the beginning of meetings how we time everyone's talks. And that way, they'll know what those sounds mean.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Ashley Bear. I'm here with Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization. Co-director Nani Beretto couldn't join us today, but I'm here to give you a little presentation about Firewise. This presentation was going to be a little bit longer than that, but I will trim it down to five minutes. Really quickly, a little bit about Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization. The organization's been around for over 20 years, working in wildfire preparedness, prevention, mitigation and outreach here in Hawaii. And we're a hub organization, so we work with the fire departments. We work with DLNR, as well as directly with communities. And we're a nonprofit. We're not a government agency or anything, so we're 100% funded by. So this is the part I'll kind of skip over. I don't think I need to convince anyone anymore that wildfire is an issue here in Hawaii. Oh, really quick, I do just want to mention that I have a bunch of these action guides, if anyone wants one. See me after. They're really great personal action guides. But the thing I want to focus on with only five minutes is how can you prepare your whole neighborhood and community for wildfire resilience? And that is why we have the Firewise program. So wildfires are going to happen, land's going to burn, but we don't want our neighborhoods and communities to be affected by that in the long term. So Firewise is a framework that helps residents to begin social organizing and developing an action plan to take actions for risk reduction in their own communities. And so it's not a one-size-fits-all kind of program. It's very catered to every single community that becomes a Firewise site. It's, we listen to your concerns and help you develop an action plan for risk reduction. And it's not the only solution for wildfire, of course. There's many tools that we have to use to tackle wildfire, but it can be one piece of the solution. Really quickly, brief overview of Firewise. It was started in 2002 by the National Fire Prevention Association. We've been a part of it here in Hawaii since 2014. We have 25 sites that are actively recognized, 16 more in the application process, and dozens more that are currently in the early phases of community organizing. And this is the roster of the formerly recognized Firewise sites. Waho looks kind of sad up there with just the one, but we have, actually Neighborhood Board 2 is, you guys are like, kind of killing it because you have three already in the works. You've had a couple of people go through the first step, which is organize it. So the four broad steps to becoming a Firewise site are organize it, plan it, do it, and tell us about it. So that first part, organize it, is organizing a committee or a board, which doesn't have to be necessarily Neighborhood Board members, but it can be. It can also be any community members that are really interested in taking action and being responsible for the Firewise application process and keeping up the Firewise recognition. They'll also be responsible for defining the boundaries of the community. Sorry, okay. You'll also help us to organize the community hazard assessment, which is when we come out, Hawaii Wildfire Management comes out, we invite DLNR, as well as the fire department and any other parties that might be interested to come out and do a hazard assessment in the neighborhood. We come and we listen to everyone's concerns. We walk around or drive around the neighborhood with you so that you can tell us where your areas of concern are. And we can also point out things that we notice along the way. And we put all of that into a report. So then that report is handed back to the Firewise Board and we support you in creating an action plan, Part 2, Plan It. Okay, sorry. So, action plan, you'll do it. There are some minimum requirements to check off, which I'm happy to discuss. You can also find it in hawaiiewildfire.org/FirewiseProgram. I'll put the link in the chat after I'm done here. I also have Firewise brochures, if anyone is interested, that give a little bit more. So I know my time is up and I don't want to impede too much. So I'm happy to speak more with anyone that's interested or answer any questions.
Go ahead, Nani.
A couple of weeks ago, Inahaina Prepared Organization had somebody come up. Was that people that came up here and they were in this room?
Yes, I think that was Matt Gley. Okay, from Hawaii Kai.
And it's the same, you're the same group?
He's one of our... He's one of our community leaders.
Well, I have a, may I ask you a question? So typically, if you were to, well, if a group within the community wanted to have, you know, have you come and see their area, wouldn't it mostly in a valley situation like what we have? It would be maybe the people that live along a street that backs up to wild, you know, grassland. So it would be, say, people on, the people on How Street, for example. Or on, let's see, on this side, it would be, let's see. Who is on this side, on the west side, against the mountain? Or Lavi Lavi. Lavi Lavi isn't quite against the side of the street, I mean, the side of the hill. But would it, it wouldn't be everyone in the valley, right, who would want to form a Firewise community? But it would probably be the people who live right where the grass and the kukui nut tree, you know, all the dry stuff was in their backyard.
Yeah, it depends on the board that forms. So it can be as small and specific as that. Or, so the minimum number of single-family dwelling units is eight to form a Firewise community, but the maximum is 2,500. So it can encompass an entire valley or it can be just one street. It's up to the board that forms to define the boundaries.
Okay, thank you. And so we can find out more by contacting you there.
Yes, that's our contact information. And I've got some Firewise brochures as well that I'm happy to share with anyone that wants one. Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Ashley. I'm sorry we couldn't... Oh, okay, two questions. Go ahead. Sheri?
I just wanted to know, in the past 30, 35 years that I've been on this board, the fires that have started, if you discount the hecko wires that always set off the fires because they don't clear out the brush, the ones that always happen without, and I don't know why they start, and I don't know the Hawaiian name for the hillside. You're at Sandy Beach, you look back at that mountain range and over on the ocean side of it, and then on the Eva side of it. They get fires there all the time and they're very dangerous and they get very big and they're always a windy conditions. It's very dangerous and it could really blow over Hawaii Kai. And I don't know the name of that ridge. Historically, so I don't know if, if you go to the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board, you're going to talk to them. They should care because that's like frightening what happens out there.
Yeah.
And here, usually hecko wires.
Okay, are you going to all the Neighborhood Boards?
We were asked to be here. We show up anywhere we're asked to be. Yeah, we don't generally reach out.
Okay. So, Oahu and Oahu Lupe, we do cultural work, but then we also try to, like, we cut the grass down, you know, where we see it overgrown and we always try to take out the dry brush around the area where we work. So, and I think what we're trying to do is like fireproof the area too, like, and help with that in planting trees. So if we're a cultural group, can we, you know, be on that whole thing where we're organizing or? Like how you had the steps, right?
Yeah, I...
Can we be a part of you guys' hub thing or?
Oh, yeah. Love to connect further and work with you. I don't know if Firewise would be the right avenue as a cultural group, but...
Because, yeah, because the other work we do is fire, I believe it's fireproofing from what I've read and studied. You know, because after the Lahaina fires, you know, there's certain things. And we even had a presentation here about fireproofing. So I'm thinking that, you know, planting trees or even what his work with the river and all of that. So, so are, I mean, just how do you sign up on the hub thing?
You can contact us and sign up for our newsletter. And then if there's something that, like, we can come out and give a presentation about the area about the area, but actions you can take for fire risk mitigation as well and a working relationship. Yeah, everything that you say is 100% mitigation, yeah.
I think an expansion on the chair's question that it seems like in the valleys, the transition area between the homes and the naturalized vegetation seems to be a high-risk area. In Kuleo, I watched a fire coming over the ridge down to the residential community. Fortunately, it was stopped by the fire department. And then in Inahaina, you know, the stream, although it's green at the moment, sometimes at the end of the summer, the six-foot-high cane grass gets a little crispy. So what kind of recommendations are you giving homeowners for that buffer zone behind their house? Or what would you recommend as far as dealing with the tall vegetation and the stream?
Thanks. That's a good question. Anything that is on your property that you can manage, there are recommendations for certain distances. Anything that is on your property that you can manage, there are recommendations for certain distances away from your house. Guidelines for how to trim the vegetation back that can help create a defensible zone around your home. But a lot of times that falls on someone else's property. So that's one of the benefits of being part of a Firewise community too, is that we can offer a little bit of extra leverage in having that report that says like, hey, this is an issue that you can show to the neighboring owner. If it is like a large landowner or that a lot of times can help get the right permissions to either have a community group or a volunteer group come out and take care of creating a fire break and taking down some of that vegetation.
Thank you very much, Ashley. Appreciate you coming tonight. Well, I'm pleased to finally let Anne Marie Kirk tell us about something that we're quite concerned about. And Ka'ivi is closer to us, I mean, is very close to us, not quite as close as it is to the Hawaii Kai community. But we really appreciate you telling us what has been proposed and let us know what what the Ka'ivi Coalition has decided so far and is going to do about this project.
Thank you so much, Chair Burkhart. Again, my name is Anne Marie Kirk. I'm with the Ka'ivi Coalition. And I want to thank the Chair. I thought I was just going to come up during public input. So I saw that it was on the agenda and I was like, oh, okay, awesome, more time to speak. Thank you for understanding how important it is. So for 50-plus years, the Ka'ivi Coalition, which was a sandy beach coalition, which before that was surfers and community members, all worked to keep the Ka'ivi coast, that whole beautiful coastline free and from development and protected in its natural state. I have been working on it for a number of years. Never would I ever have thought that I would be fighting development in the ocean. But that's where we find ourselves. So, and this is happening very quickly. So July 31st, the Bureau of Energy Management held a meeting in Waialo with over 400 people attending because people are starting to hear. Now, why are people upset? What are they hearing? That a company that's based in the mainland, Progression Energy, who then changed their name to Alkahi to work in Hawaii, is proposing 30 to 50 wind air turbines in the Ka'ivi Channel, 12 miles offshore. And the community had no say in this. You think you have a say, but the company, Alkahi, actually went to the Department of Defense. So all our islands are in red, security. It's security military. They went to the Department of Defense and over three years without any community input, they lowered our defense in the Ka'ivi Channel to yellow. Once it turned yellow, then they could move forward with development in the channel. This is outrageous. This is a for-profit company that is taking away our rights to have a say and also putting us in a place that's vulnerable. So on July 31st, this meeting was held and Bohem, who is under the Department of Interior, gave a presentation. It was overwhelming. People were upset about this. Then Bohem had a meeting on August 22nd and it was during a workday where many of us couldn't go. And those that did attend came early in the morning but couldn't speak till 3 o'clock. What happens at 3 o'clock? You got to go out and put money in the meter. So there was a lot of fishy things going on. Now, so what are we concerned about? Again, it's the leasing of our ocean wilderness. And this is all for that energy plan from 2040, right? Where we're going to be 90% energy efficient and I think another five years after that, 100%. But what we're saying, there are so many different alternatives to be talked about, not Ka'ivi. Let's look at PV. Let's look at different things that can happen. So when Bohem held this meeting, it was very clear that they were very far in the process because what they're saying is we want community input. Okay, but you didn't ask us to go Department of Defense. We want to know what you want. We tell them we don't want it, but they can move ahead anyway. They can move ahead once it gets approved. And Bohem is like, we don't have a client with Alkahi sitting in the room. And then why is Bohem putting out three studies for Ka'ivi? One for cultural landscape, one for navigation, and one for marine birds. Why would they be putting out a contract for this? By the way, one of the contracts was worth $400,000 to $450,000 for one study. There's three studies being done. So the question is not only 12 miles out into our ocean wilderness, but where did the cables come? They've got to come back to Oahu. Where are they going to hook up? We saw in Nantucket about a month ago, the turbines there broke, the blades broke. They had to shut them down and now the blades are washing up on shore and it's a real safety hazard. So we've brought these things up over and over again. One of the things we haven't really dealt with was the cultural component of this. And part of the reason is, and I'm very hesitant to talk about our cultural resources on Ka'ivi, because they take our knowledge and then they mitigate it and use it against us to say, well, this won't affect this and this won't affect that. And they're using our kopuna against this. You know, all of us in this room, we today are descendants. We're all descendants, right? We have ancestors who came before us. But one day, we're going to all be ancestors. And what are those descendants going to say to us? Did we stand up for Ka'ivi? Now, it's been very, very frustrating at meetings because when we would ask questions, and at the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board meeting, Alkahi was the first time they presented. And over and over again, they said, we want to work with you. We're just doing a study. We're just trying to figure things out. And again, everyone said, what do you have to study when the answer is no? If the answer is no, what is there to study? Now, again, Bohem and Alkahi, they can just continue to move ahead. So how do we fight this? We go right back to the source. We raise that defense level back up. Because if that defense level is red, they cannot go in the channel. So that's what we're asking of our congressional leaders and our senators and also our governor. So we're asking our governor to take our ocean wilderness. We're not only talking about Ka'ivi, we're talking about all of Hawaii. We're not saying push it somewhere else. We're saying we don't want this anywhere in our ocean wilderness. So take it off the table. We don't want it part of that alternative energy plan. Let's have a discussion on things that are more effective and more efficient. Because right now, going into a place that has such deep meaning, I don't know about you folks, but I know when people come to visit Oahu, one of the first places you take them, you drive the Ka'ivi coastline. That's what you do. And it's beloved by so many. And again, you know, when we look at it today and look at the pictures I gave you, there's 30 to 50 of those that they plant. So our goal right now is to stop it in its tracks. So the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board is currently writing a letter. And I won't speak to the letter because I'm not a board member, but I would ask the Chair to please speak to that board and join us because I know our Neighborhood Boards are such a force. We've come here on other issues and when we come together, we can really create change. People can also contact the Ka'ivi Coalition. And we're still gathering as we're going, I mean, imagine for three years, a company met to talk about our community, to profit off of our community and never came to us and then showed up at a meeting and said, well, we want to know what you think. So with that said, there's lots of information and I don't want to go over my time, but I would love to ask the Chair and the Board to please consider working with Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board and joining in on the letter. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Two questions. Wasn't there an environmental assessment or environmental impact statement required?
That hasn't even happened yet.
Has it been required?
I don't, that I don't know.
And the other question, I would
I would, I would think that it would be, but we're just catching up. All the things that they're doing.
Impact?
Yeah.
Well, like what you said, the wires, you don't just plunk those horrible monstrosities in the ocean and they break and they do, and they stay there and rust. But they have to connect them to the island and they have to dig through and blast to get those wires deep enough. Who's the final governing authority to approve this project?
That's where it gets weird, is it the Department of Defense? And then they clear it, then Bohem gets it, the Bureau of Energy Management, and then they move it forward. So I myself am trying to figure it out, to be honest. So we might have people that are going to jump on and join us with that information.
Do need the help of the Governor and the Congressional.
Exactly. That's why we need that meeting.
They're going to play that gray area like, oh, it's DOD and then it's all these like, that's going to get bad.
It's complicated, I think purposely. And the other thing we're not talking about, and it happened at Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board meeting, someone came up and they came up to the mic and they hit a button and they put on the sonar, what would be heard underwater. And it was just frightening to think about our ocean creatures and what they would have to go through.
Hi, my name is Joyce and this is near and dear to my heart. I definitely support clean energy. I'm all for that. I'm not for the wind turbines. I've done some research, a lot of research. Bill 2535 went into Hawaii law a couple of years ago about wind turbines being 12 miles offshore. And there is no limit. It's up to the House to decide how far offshore. And what I heard the Vice President of EDF Energy say is they can't go down more than several hundred feet. So it will be closer to shore. It won't be 12 miles offshore. She admitted it will be visible from shore. Each turbine is taller than a football field and the wingspan is greater than that of a commercial jet. And anyone who's curious as to how this is working, just research Martha's Vineyard turbines. They have been breaking on average nine times per year and they're falling apart and floating ashore, creating debris. NOAA did do a study. NOAA is for wind energy. And I believe that's why they are targeting our Ka'ivi coast is because NOAA has already done a study. I think that study needs to be redone. It was 2017, sorry. I know that's my time. Last thing I want to say is these turbines are not our solution. They're only going to provide 25% of the energy for Oahu and we're going to pay twice for it. EDF will sell that energy to Hiko. Hiko will sell it to us. It's not going to be cheaper. It's going to go ashore in Kaneohe and then it has to be routed to the Hiko substation at Ko'olau, which is near H3 and Kamamea Highway. So that's going to be high voltage lines all the way from the ocean to that intersection, a lot of traffic disruption, construction mess and everything else. Sorry, I went over.
My name's Stephanie Spangler and I've worked in the film industry scouting locations for motion pictures and commercials for the past 43, 40 some odd years. It may not mean anything to anybody except the fact that most of my sites for scenic location filming is sandy beach, the Kalani Anali Highway coastline, along Lanai Lookout and Bloho, looking out to sea, Makapu'u up at the Hankline Ridge overlooking out to Molokai. And the idea that those wind turbines would take away the filming scenics that are the most filmed of all Hawaiian islands is shocking to me. And I know that doesn't count when you're trying to stop such a project as this with Department of Defense and this company. But if it means anything, maybe someone will hear and think maybe that site plane should be preserved. I don't know. I just think it's just a horrible, horrible thought to have this put in.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Chair.
I'm sure you're already aware, but you know, they already have four sites on the islands, right?
On land, yeah.
Yeah. They have the wind and they have three solar here. So they're already established.
They're not established in the ocean.
Right. No, no, no. I wholeheartedly agree with you on this, but I just think it makes a more difficult fight.
I would say with Ka'ivi Coalition, we like a difficult fight. You know, we, part of the work we do and like with Joyce, we come together and we share information. That's the only way we're going to stop this. And you asked about the height. It's starting at 300 feet, which is like the Statue of Liberty height. The ones in Nantucket were over 800 feet, just so you know. So, and the study that you spoke about, we don't know if there's going to be a new study. That's why I didn't want to speak to it because we're not really sure where that is.
Please go ahead, Sherry.
I have a comment and a question. We do have them established on land and they've proven to break down and rust. And no one is regard, is, it's not necessary for the people who built them to take them away. So they stay there as rusting monuments. So the one in Kahuku is already having problems and rusting out. And they had the big fire there because they didn't know how to hook up to the batteries. They had the ones that broke on the mountains on Maui, the West Maui Mountains, or it was just the Big Island somewhere. They're hulking, rusting mess and they've been left there and no one's going to take them away. Ka'ivi Channel is one of the roughest, subject to the worst weather that I can think of to put windmills. But you said, this is the question, they're going to come in at Kaneohe Bay, so that's military. So you won't have to do any environmental impact statement because the military is going to claim the land. So you can do more damage there and no one's going to have oversight on it, except the military who have taken such care already for us.
So one of the concerns is the company that's proposing this has not done this before. So they have not done this before. Secondly, when you look at what could happen, because say this company doesn't, because they have to still go for the lease. You have to go then to Bohem to buy to get the lease. But if they don't get the lease and they step away, another company can come in. Why? Because the defense was lowered. So that's why it's key in getting that defense back to red.
We have two more questions. Tara Roas, please. Tara, go ahead.
Yes, aloha, Tara Roas. So I'd like to start off by saying that we was there to stop, try to stop the Kahuku turbines. We were there for total, I think, was almost like a month, so double time, you know, nighttime hours. To hear that they're breaking now and everything and even people watching as well online, they're saying, you know, Hawaii has the worst oxidation damage, humidity, salt year round. Now you're going to put it in smack in the ocean where Evi and also as you mentioned, you know, the roughest, the roughest channel. So, starting with that, second, that's what I was trying to get at with this whole destruction and corruption and then lack of ability to meet face-to-face with the person, not their representative. So if you're to see a, you know, like your teacher, for example, and you have a substitute teacher, you know, taking their place, that's not the same. A president of a company is not the same as a vice president. It's nothing against you all. I'm just saying that all of this comes into mind because Alkahi Energy tried in Kalailoa and because it was de-emission incompatible by the Department of Defense, it was denied. So everything that they're saying here, they found this new place. Now, in that meeting, that was me that put the sound and her response, oh, that's why we need to do studies to figure out how we can make the technology quieter. And what does that mean? So how, at what level can we continuously play it for the marine life? In addition to this unsightliness, but to the marine life where they're not affected. This company, this person is getting, they're getting paid by EDF to do the studies who want this to go through. So there is a complicated interest and I have to put on the record, this same person, it was assistant to Daniel Inouye, in which there was a hearing in Congress 22 years ago. So deja vu to Red Hill. It talked about the shad, the hazards, the chemicals that were released into Hawaii, contaminating their waters. And so it's all tied in. And yes, how do we get this one-on-one, these one-on-one meetings with the Governor Josh Green and with Congressional, you know, Ed Case? How do we stop it as a community, island-wide? Because the bill you mentioned, 2535 wind turbines, there also was a recent, you know, ban on deep-sea mining. So this is going all against that. And after the, I went to all the meetings and after Bohem, the Bohem meeting, the Hawaii State Energy Office as well came up to me and said, oh, I saw you at the Waialo meeting. You know, well, here's my card. And they didn't count, by the way, the Waialo meeting because they're invited to it. So we need to get really strategic. We need to get, again, the critical mass number. We need to organize. And yes, we need to stop it. It's like Ka'ivi Coalition has started to maintain the Ka'ivi coastline. So mahalo.
Thank you, Tara. We have a question from Elizabeth Riley. Please go ahead, Elizabeth. Thank you, Tara. Um, we have a question from Elizabeth Riley. Please go ahead, Elizabeth.
Hi, thank you, Elizabeth Riley. I'm also with Ka'ivi Coalition. I wanted to offer up just a couple of quick thoughts here. It's not a question. It's basically to convey that ocean wind energy is nothing more than an option tool for the state to consider. Just please understand that. That's why we're at a critical point where we can make a difference. This isn't a done deal as far as it having to use this technology. It is only an optional tool. That's one. Two, if there is no customer to accept this, it can't move forward. Who is the customer? HECO. My recommendation is that in addition to what the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board's doing with sending a letter to the governor, and I believe they're also going to send it to our congressional um committee, we also include HECO, because they also need to take this out of their alternative energy portfolio. If they take it out, there's no market for it. So I wanted to share that with you. Uh, the last thing I wanted to share is, uh, we did send a letter to Congressman Case. I did with another, uh, with, with another two community members. We did a summary of the Waimea Nalo meeting, as well as a summary of the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board meeting. And we're anticipating an opportunity to have a deeper conversation with him. We also understand that Representative Ward wants to send a letter to the committee in Congress that would be able to look at the lowering of the defense around Oahu. That action that Anne Marie mentioned, which is just jaw-dropping and shocking, makes me wonder how that could have happened when a month or two ago, our congressional committee on the front page of the Star advertiser was asking for Hawaii to be recognized by NATO. So it's just, it's just counterproductive to turn around and lower the defenses of the island of Oahu when our congressional committee, which is Schatz and at the time, uh, Maisy Horono, look at the paper from last month. They were asking for NATO to recognize Hawaii. It's, it's a defense tactic. So I'm just sharing this with you. There's, there's just, there's a lot of different moving parts, but the most important is to recognize that wind energy is only an optional tool. And so we need to, HECO and the governor to remove it from their alternative energy portfolio. That simple. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay, and thank you again, Anne Marie.
I want to thank the board, oh, and um I hope you'll join the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board and the community, and we will update you as we learn what, what to do next. So thank you so much.
Please. Um, one more question.
Not a question. I, can we put this on the agenda for next month since we don't have quorum to do a, a motion? We, we don't have quorum, do we? So if we can put it on the agenda for next month, we do another motion to support the non-support.
Good idea. We'll do. Thank you. Um, I'll go to closing announcements.
Aloha. You know, my son would like to testify. I actually wrote into the chat.
Um, Tara, we are, we are at the end of our time. We're actually over time and need to end this meeting.
My son, he's, he's ten, and he wanted to, just a quick comment.
I'm sorry, the library is, won't allow us to continue past this time. We have to, we have to um bring it to a close. Um, the next regular meeting of the Coolio O'Klani. Is August, is October second at six-thirty in the Inahaina Library. We look forward to seeing everyone there, and thank you for joining this meeting. This meeting is now